Okay, we're gonna open up the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for August 15th and do a roll call. Ms. Ryan?
Here.
Mr. Keefe?
Here.
Mr. Dunn?
Here.
Okay, Ms. Piranna is excused and we have two other vacancies. Right now I'll do a call to the public for any item that's not on our agenda tonight. Anybody who'd like to come up and speak to us about any planning issue or anything. Okay, seeing none, we'll close the call to the public and move on to Agenda Item 1. First item of business is a public hearing to reconsider an application for a transfer of city property. Consideration of a request for the transfer of city parcel, APN 103-72-051A, located at 8 Old Douglas Road. The applicant wishes to acquire the city parcel to establish a business. And the applicant is Mr. Todd Conklin. And I see that all public notice requirements have been met. So with that, I'll ask for our staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to make it clear, I'm not sure why everything shows up as reconsider, but all of these items are being considered for the first time. They are all fresh hearings. So the item before us, a quick visual first, and we can figure out how to dim the lights if folks are having a little bit of trouble seeing this. There we go. So the parcel question is the one highlighted here in red with the building surrounded by the evergreen. It is the old, I'm told it's the Sexton Building, I'm afraid I haven't been here long enough to know it is that, but it appears basically be a multi-bay garage next to another commercial building. It is there, an area that is zoned, general commercial. It's currently owned by the city and not really being used for much of anything. There may be some kind of miscellaneous city stuff in there, but it's not a valuable city So the applicant is requesting to transfer that, as stated, to use it for a business, as he has a business located at his home and he would like to change that. I'm sorry, this is not, I mean, technical difficulties. You could just by, close this up and do it by memory while it reopens. So what we have here is, again, a request to transfer this building, and it's been transmitted appropriate city staff. The Public Works Director, City Engineer, is equally enthusiastic about removing a potential liability for the city because it is a building that we have to upkeep. I am putting it into private ownership. It does have the benefit of, if the applicant does succeed in the purchase, because this will have to go to auction, if he does succeed in the purchase, it will move a commercial business out of a residential area into a commercial area. So this is, these are all very strong positives from a planning and a city management perspective. So with that said, the process will be, will be an auction that the starting bid will be based on, but probably below, an appraisal with inspection of the building to determine state and approximate costs to rehabilitate the building. Of course, the building is in brand-new condition, and so would not be done as if it were a brand-new building. But because it does not have a historic connection to any other property, it will go again to public auction rather than going through the, an immediate purchase, as some of the other ones we'll hear tonight would be able to go through immediate purchase. So that said, staff pretty clearly recommends that we sell this building, at least post it for auction at the request of Mr. Conklin, at a price to be determined upon appraisal and inspection.
Since I'm done talking, let me get this back working again. I will open the public hearing and take public comments on this. Can you focus that a little bit? Me?
No, it is, it is way... It's better, it's just not good. First, let's get it as, that's as small as I'm gonna get it.
Okay, so I have several speakers signed up here to speak on behalf of this, about this docket. So the first one I have here is Ben Lovely.
Hi. I'm not super familiar with what the process is for auctioning. Well, first off, let me say, from a historic preservation...
Sorry, Ben, can you give us your full name and address?
Ben Lovely, 2710 Bisbee. The light's on, so it should be on. So from a historic preservation point of view, I think it's good that a building that's not being utilized fully, generally are not maintained as much as they could be because people just surround them. So from that perspective, I would support this building being utilized for new use that is similar, storage in a shop. So also, the zoning, there's not an immediate residential nearby, so it seems like, I don't think anyone alive would be disturbed. Anyways, my question is, what are the different rules regarding auction or not auction? I think you briefly mentioned them, but I'm totally unfamiliar with that. Those rules, is it a monetary amount? Or, and then, if so, what are the rules for evaluating a project or place that's been vacant for a long time?
I just noticed that I got out of order a little bit on my agenda here, and that we're actually supposed to have the applicant get up first and give a little presentation. So we'll take those questions into consideration, Ben. So Todd, you wanna give us a little background on what you're planning to do there?
Yes, sir. Would you like me to state my name and address?
Sure.
Todd Conklin, 822C Pace Avenue, Bisbee. Basically, that particular building is on the condemned list to the city of Bisbee. I do have a home-based business that's based at 822C Pace Avenue. I do have a business license, where I am, maybe one of that business out there. I would like to expand my business, and I would like a property to do that with. So this is a viable option for me and my company. I started my company about a little under two years ago, it's been very successful, and we're growing. And so I need a place that I can grow in. That particular building is in disrepair, the roof's shot, the doors are falling off. It's an ice hole, frankly. And I contacted Mr. Arnold with the city of Bisbee. He told me that I had his blessing, I guess you could say, for the purchase. So I, with that also, I would be able to move a lot of my stuff that I have up there in a residential neighborhood to this commercial property. And it's a, it's gonna produce taxes, and we're gonna have another structure that has lights on compared to a lot of these condemned structures that are lying around. I am on the Design Review Board, I am going to take that into concern, you know, into consideration whenever I'm remodeling this building. And it's gonna take a lot of money, a lot of money to prepare this building. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Yeah. Commissioners, questions?
I guess, yeah. Two. Is there any, you've mentioned, you've mentioned a few times about moving out of, would you plan to discontinue all of your business activities other than clerical type stuff up at the house?
I have.
Or would you still be utilizing both properties for storage and vehicles and all that type of stuff?
I'm sure that I will have some ramen boxes and stuff like that inside of my garage, but other than that, my work van, which I think is appropriate to bring to my home...
Yeah, of course.
...would probably be there, but I have a bucket truck. I, and I'm not deterrence from your question, but I just built a, I purchased some city property that is on Pace Avenue, and I just built a large wall so that I could produce two parking spots. And originally, I was trying to do this to accommodate traffic in the area. And between me and you, I think it cost me $12,000 to build this wall and create these parking spots. The next step that's logical to me is to get all that stuff out of there. So to answer your question, my work van will probably be there, but we would have morning tailgates at the other property, at the 8 Douglas Road. All my equipment would be down there. And what you see is half of what I have. I have a ride-on trencher, I have a bobcat, I have a scissor lift, I have more trailers than I can, that I even know about. And this would be really good, and it'd also be really good for Pace Avenue.
The other one is, I'm more curious, because you specified it in your thing, is, I intend to restore building to original footprint. What's your thinking behind being that specific there?
Were you guys able to actually look at the building?
Just the aerials.
Okay.
Is that back portion there, was there a building there also, sort of, with it making an alley?
How it was originally built was, there was a commercial bay doors, and they're running, I'm not exactly what its function was, but in the back there was an apartment. So I'm not sure if, I think that'd probably be like an office area or something like that, but, you know, I was able to get a tour of the building, and right now, there's a beehive that's probably the size of a full grown man in that back window in there. But what I was, what I was getting at is that I would like to restore the fronts of it, so repair the doors, keep the original footprint of the building. Because I'm in historic preservation, I'm on the Design Review Board. A lot of the people that you're gonna hear from today are also on the Design Review Board.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions?
Yes, your vehicles will be kept in the building, or will they be parked in front of the building?
There's no way I could fit that bucket truck inside there, Mr. Dunn. I will do my best to keep, to put what can fit in those bay doors in there. Yes, sir. The bucket truck's 11 foot tall. But, yeah, that's what I wanna do, and it works out great for me because I'm able to put equipment that is very valuable inside, you know. But like I said, I can't put anything in there until we put a new roof on it. And the city, they're hurting for money, and this building has been neglected. I definitely want to take the time to fix it and fix it right.
You are across from the school there, which...
Yes, sir.
Are there any factors there that you consider your plans?
As far as traffic coming around, we'll obey all speed limits and I don't plan on changing anything that's happening across the street. It's me and two guys, that's what my company, you know, consists of.
I'm sure that's a question that's gonna come up, you know, certainly at the end of school, the start of school, there's certainly more traffic there, of course, that would affect you, but...
Well, I'm okay with it because that's something that I cannot change, but I will adapt to the situation. And I'm a law of ICA citizen, and I definitely don't have any problems working with the superintendent, it's Mr. Woody, I believe, or whoever it is, if they had any concerns, I would have a meeting with them. Does that answer your question, sir?
Yeah. Okay, thank you, Todd. I have a question for Peter. Do we check on the zoning on this to C1?
Yes, it is, it is C1.
Yeah, but is what Mr. Conklin proposing permissible in C1? I'm looking at the matrix of uses here, and I'm just trying to nail down where contracting services, or contracting storage, et cetera, would be, and whether or not this actually, I just wanna make sure that he's got the right zoning for this. Because under storage uses, the only kind of storage that's allowed in there would be warehousing of retail wholesale goods, non-flammable, non-hazardous. So I'm guessing it probably fits under that, but contract services isn't a use listed in our matrix right now?
No, but that warehousing, retail wholesale goods...
Covered it.
Would be the, would be the closest that we have.
Okay.
I also wanna bring up that I'm not selling services, I'm not selling goods out of that particular area.
Right, no, it's a store.
I'm an on-call electrician, you call me, I come out to you. That would basically be a place where that houses vehicles, equipment, materials.
Right, warehousing, yeah, it would fit under there, because it's warehousing comma retail slash wholesale goods.
It's warehousing non-dangerous goods, which is what you are. You're not a welding supply shop with tanks full of gear.
No, sir, we got wire nuts and boxes. I wanna thank you guys for hearing my application. It means a lot to me that you guys are at least hearing it.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna reopen the public hearing, and the next on my list is John Sky.
Chair, Mr. Chair, would you like me to answer Mr. Lovely's questions now, or save them till the end?
Sure, why don't you go ahead and answer his question about the process?
So the process, there's an ordinance written that talks about historically associated with, and if a property is, meets those criteria, which are a little broad, then it doesn't have to go to auction. This was driven by a situation a number of years ago where folks were selling their home, and there was a, their garage turned out to be sitting on City Right-of-Way, and they thought it was very simple, they'll just put in the request, buy the City Right-of-Way under their garage, and they're good. Well, at that time, all properties had to be auctioned, and their garage was sniped out from underneath them. Somebody outbid them on their garage, and so the attorney, city attorney at the time, wrote in ordinance, again, it's kind of vague language, it's kind of up to staff to determine historically associated with, if it's only connected to one property, or it's been historically used for one property. Both Mr. Sky's parking, Mr. Conklin's parking, were both done that way, that they were historically associated with the property, so they didn't have to go to auction. This doesn't have any historical basis with any other, with the applicant's site or any other site, so it will have to go to auction, just as a matter of law. You won't hear that, you'll hear it a little differently on most of the other items tonight.
Okay, Mr. Sky.
Good evening. My name's John Sky, I live at 429E Laundry Hill. I just wanted to throw out there, you know, me and Todd, we both went to little school. We actually knew some people that lived in this building when we were growing up. You know, we had found out that the city was trying to figure out what to do with it, the city really didn't know to have the money to fix it. Todd had already been in the process of looking for a place to move all of his equipment, trucks, et cetera, especially since there's been a lot of problems over that up there. And I think that it is obviously gonna be good for Old Bisbee, for him to have a place to put all this stuff that's up there by the volleyball courts and Pace Avenue, and it's gonna create even more parking now, which is always a good thing. Another business in Bisbee, a building being utilized, obviously is good for the town. You know, we're both on the Design Review Board, we're interested, this is an old building, we're interested in saving old buildings. I've got quite a few projects going on right now. I wanna help Todd, you know, kill two birds with one stone, fix a building, get him set up for his future. Obviously, property taxes are gonna come into play, we'll be paying property taxes. And, you know, Lowell, they actually made military vehicles down in Lowell back during the war. You know, there's a lot going on down there back in the day, and having some more of that go on will be good for the town. And that's basically it. Me and my partner, Old Bisbee Enterprise, will be helping him to do it right, like he said, so I think it's good for the town and for Mr. Conklin. All right, thank you.
Okay, I've got Dan. Is that Dan Touch? Calvin.
Once again, my name's Dan House, I live at 502 Bisbee Road. I'm a little familiar with the building that Todd wants to purchase, and as someone experienced renovation myself, I do think it'd be a positive gesture for him to use that building and create activity in that area. I don't think he's going to be a detriment to the flow of traffic going in or out. And basically, also a reiteration of what Ben was saying about historical preservation as well. I just think it's a big positive all the way around.
Okay. And Michael, my partner.
Interesting, we're on this side of the planning and zoning. Michael, my partner, lives at 536C Warren Hill Street. Especially reflects on the time I served on PNC, as well as currently continuing to serve on DRB. This just seems like a win-win for the city of Bisbee. We get commercial vehicles and other vehicles out of a residential neighborhood, we get them in a commercial structure, we get taxes paid to the city of Bisbee, which is in desperate need of. So all in all, this to me looks like a win-win for the city of Bisbee. And, based on what Mr. Conklin has indicated, you know, the potential to save at least the facade of the historic structure, that's not even in the historic district, but a commitment to do that as well. So I think whatever we can be keeping business in business, commercially zoned areas, that's a plus for us, especially given our history in the city being cheap to jowl in most neighborhoods. So I would just encourage you to support approving this, going to auction, I guess, as the process has been.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else wish to speak on this item? I didn't sign up. Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and open up discussions with the commission. So any commissioners have any questions or comments they'd like to make about this?
Yeah, just mentioned a few times about the historical facade, although it's not an historical area. So although it's, there's really no way to preserve that, though. If this goes through, goes to auction, some other entity comes in and buys it, it's really, there's no way to make that happen, is there?
Right. It's not in the district.
It's not a zoning, so it's just, it would be the words, the words of whomever's buying it, saying, hey, I'm, I plan to do this. And that would be it, they couldn't get into it, and then just say, ah, it's not gonna work out, and we're just gonna put up a whole new building or something.
That's a possibility.
Okay, I was just curious, because that could reflect in value the need to maintain that facade versus just dirt with the whole building.
Any other comments? Mr. Dunn?
I'm making a motion.
Okay.
I move that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend the mayor and city council the transfer of APN 103-72-051A to the applicant for appropriate consideration pending appraisal and inspection.
Okay, do I have a second?
Yeah, I have a second, sorry, it's not through, yes, I'll second.
Okay, take a vote now, so I will call Mr. Dunn.
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Ms. Brian?
Epstein.
And Chair votes aye, so that's, you know, with one up stent. Okay? Thanks, guys.
Hey, thank you, guys, I really, and ladies and gentlemen, thank you, guys, so much for your approval on this, means a lot, and hopefully I get the money together to get this thing up.
All right. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Two, public hearing, consider an application to transfer city property. Consideration of a request for the transfer of a portion of City Right-of-Way located on Adams Avenue. The applicant wishes to swap private land underlying the roadway with land adjacent to his property, and the applicant is Mr. David Hanson. And again, all public notice requirements have been met. So with that, I'll ask for the staff report on this one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. As stated, what we have here is a private property owner who has, who has some odd property. Adams Avenue does not line up very well with, as you can see, physically does not line up very well with the Right-of-Way, and in places runs completely along private property. So what we're seeing here is track of Right-of-Way, whereas we're seeing where the actual road is. So Mr. Hanson is looking at is to transfer the portion of this that is, oh, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong curve. It's even worse over here. So we're seeing, this runs right across public property. This Right-of-Way is very narrow. So he's asking to basically give this Right-of-Way to the city in exchange for some land here and access from here. It's very straightforward again, that we've got land that we shouldn't have, and we should have land that we don't have, and the applicant is asking to rectify that. The biggest concern a lot of folks have had in this area is this turnaround up here, for those of us that are familiar with Laundry Hill, Adams Avenue area. I know I had used this before in the past, while probably parking there illegally to go on hikes, not probably, definitely parking there illegally to go on hikes. And I had lots of fun parking there, I realized I should have backed in instead of going forward and backing out. But there's been a lot of concern with neighbors that this is going to become private property. It's currently City Right-of-Way. This is all city-owned, public land. With this weird little chunk here, I'm gonna get to flash here. Nope. Da-da-da-da-da. There we go. So you see, you're crossing this little lip of private property to get on it, but this is the concern right here, that this will become private property and somebody will block it off. That is not the case. My professionalism would prohibit me from ever selling a turnaround on a one-way road like this, but we do wanna make it very clear that this is gonna be memorialized permanently with easements. We are working to try to get ahold of this owner and transfer, oh, that's you, we want that land. We'll get back to that. We'll give you something in exchange for it, we want that land. Because you're crossing her property to get here, and right now, there's no easement across this for this turnaround. So at some point, we'd like to do a land swap for this, and I'll talk to her after the meeting. But again, the big million-dollar question is this right here, we don't wanna infringe on that. Other than that, the transfer's really straightforward. It's a straight, I believe, .82 acres for .82 acres. There is no, it gets possession of the road back to the city and just gets, swaps land that we're not using, that we can't use in exchange for that. So staff does heartily recommend this one as well, because we always like to own the land under our roads, and this does not cause any harm to anyone.
All right, is the applicant here, Mr. Hanson?
I do not see him.
Okay.
I believe he's, I believe he's out of town this week.
Okay.
But I believe his surveyor is here if we have really pointed questions. Sorry to throw you under the bus like that, I just don't want it table for another month if you can answer anything they might have.
Okay, Mrs. Summers, did you wanna, do you wanna present anything?
No, not really, I just came down to see how everything goes with land transfers, because I do a lot of surveying where, you know, there's old retaining walls that are in private Right-of-Way.
I'm sorry, can we get you, come up with it, so we get it up? Thanks.
Glenn Summers, 221 Van Dyke. I just came down to, because this is, I'm starting to pick up, I just started my business about a year and a half ago, and I'm starting to get clients with land swap issues, retaining walls, and roads in Bisbee that go on private property, and this is one such case, and I just wanted to come down and then, you know, David's out of town, and maybe give him a phone call and say that I attended, and everything kinda looks good. And if you guys had any questions, there's, we produced a map, kinda showing, we produced both an aerial, an aerial image down that shows the road relative to the property lines that I located up there and stuff like that, to really kinda clarify the property that the road is on, private property. And so, that's all I can do now for it.
Okay, thank you. And the commission can pass that around, I think, if you're able to make a comment with anything that they... So I'm gonna open the meeting to the public. Anybody wishing to speak on this? I don't have anybody signed up, but anybody wishing to speak on this matter, on this particular item? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and open it up for commissioners' comments.
I have one. When I was with Chiracawa, there was a homeless impound up there that I sent the outreach team to, several overdoses of variety of prehensives. Has it been determined if that is still there?
I probably didn't walk high enough up there to see, I did not see, and I didn't talk to anyone who was aware of that.
And I've been hiking up in that area and have not seen any...
It's gone, I'm sure, okay.
Okay, any other comments?
Are you saying Adams is a very challenging road? Anything that, any improvements that we've made? I mean, the specifics of this, I don't fully comprehend, but any way that, any improvements presented to us would really be an asset.
Yeah, I agree. Ryan?
Yeah, I just, I don't see any mention here of compensation.
It's a straight swap.
I appreciate that, except one can argue that land under an existing road has less value than some dirt that's attached to a lot that expands the lot, that then becomes part of a residential property. So, that was a concern that I saw, that there is... You ask an appraiser to appraise both parcels, the parcel that isn't under the road is most likely going to have a higher value than the one under it.
I understand. Whereas for the city, the parcel under the land, the parcel under the road has a higher value. So, for the city, the value is that we're getting a better deal from the city's perspective, because we are now owning our road.
So, I...
We're currently maintaining private property when we go up there and fix that road.
Right. But is there... I know it's just insecure, but it's not like they could ever close that road on you. The private people couldn't suddenly shut it down on you.
Well, given that it's not in the right spot, it would involve a lot of time in court to force it back open, potentially. We'd win eventually, but it would be very expensive.
And this parcel that you're swapping him for, absolutely no other adjacent parcels, nothing?
No. It is a chunk out of this large public property here, which made it very convenient.
And I thought I saw something here. Is there something planned for it, or is it just going to remain vacant?
He plans to build a home.
Oh, there's nothing there now, so it's a big vacant piece of dirt?
It is all just vacant dirt. And what he... The part he's asking for is primarily to give him access, because he doesn't really have real access, real good legal access, because if you're looking here, this is his property here.
Right.
He's got this little tiny strip there that is not physically functional for access. So, what he's asking for is to get this piece and get memorialized access through this way.
Okay. So, there's no access, just cutting it, because Adams is currently on his property, but you can't just turn off it?
No, it's too steep. No. So, that's why the value then kind of goes back and forth. This is property right now really doesn't have a lot of value, it's inaccessible. So, this is another win-win situation from a planning perspective.
Okay. Any other comments? Chair, I intend a motion.
Once again, I move the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend the mayor and city council transfer of .82 acres city and private land per the attached exhibits.
I second the motion.
Okay. I'll take a vote. Mr. Dunn?
Aye.
Mr. Keith?
Aye.
Ms. Ryan?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, two unanimous. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Three. Another public hearing to consider an application for the transfer of city property. The consideration of a request for the transfer of a portion of city right-of-way located between Black Knob View and Van Dyke Avenue. The applicant wishes to acquire the portion of city right-of-way to extend yard space. And the applicant is John Rupe. And again, all public notice requirements have been met. So, I'll call for the staff report on this one.
Okay. I'm going to pull it up on the map as well, so it just gets a little easier to see here. Black Knob and Van Dyke.
Here we are.
Oop. Yes, there we go. So, what we're talking about here, this is towards the end of Black Knob and Van Dyke, is when the city was platted, there were those weird little extra alleys put in that are not being used for anything. And this is rather steep terrain. I have some photos. It's really unlikely to be developed as a street. There's no point for it. At this distance, it would be an incredibly steep street. It really serves no purpose. So, the applicant, who has purchased this property here, it was one property with this one here, so it's split. And the applicant is not present, but his friends, the sellers who own this, are present tonight. He'd like to purchase this to extend his parcel. Again, it's nothing that the city will ever use. It's, again, gets something off the books. It adds, okay, it'll be a minuscule amount of property tax, but it does add to the property tax revenue, and it's another section that the city is not responsible for clearing. That said, right-of-way, selling right-of-way gets a little trickier when it is a right-of-way like this that connects to multiple parcels. Under state law, everyone who touches it has a right to purchase their half. If they don't want to purchase their half, then someone else can purchase all of it. And this property owner here has expressed interest in purchasing, well, so it'd be her quarter of it. I have not heard from this property owner. So, it's possible this property owner will purchase a quarter of it. So, really, the question is whether or not to sell it, and then it will go to those property owners to, again, would all be given the opportunity to individually purchase their half of the win. Just like the others, there's no harm to the city, and it might not be a huge benefit, but it is a benefit to the city. It's not useful for police, fire, public works. It is just another patch of dirt. And if you didn't know where the property lines were, you wouldn't know where they... I can't tell where the right-of-way is versus the property lines. I just kind of took pictures of the general area. So, because this is what it looks like up from Van Dyke, that's Black Knob down there.
Actually, Mr. Rupe had it surveyed.
It was surveyed, but without the markers, you'd never know where these are, which was the point. I saw the survey markers, but my point is kind of, it kind of blends in, and nobody would know there's right-of-way there if you didn't already know it was there.
Is this the same? Okay, Rupe?
Uh-oh.
I've seen something in the staff report that's saying Pace Avenue.
That would be a copy and paste error on my part. Yeah, I'm not sure.
Yeah. No, that's the copy. Hold on, will we be transferring? Oh, is it? Okay, well, we'll take that with consideration.
Yeah, it's the Terry transfer.
Yeah.
Okay. Then I missed one when I was...
No.
So, there's no...
It's the next Agenda Item.
Okay.
So, there's no reversion process, like with railroads, that the city could just abandon that alley and turn over each half to the respective...
Unfortunately, we can't give it away for nothing. We have to do fair market value for it, which is lower than, on land like this, is going to be lower than nice, relatively flat parking, which is why we've got it at a slightly lower rate than some of the other ones we've seen before, because it's going to take a lot of work to make that remotely useful. But again, every member does have the right, and one person has called and expressed interest in purchasing their portion. But that'll be worked out. If the council approves sale, it'll be worked out through the sale process.
Oh, okay.
Doesn't have to be decided in advance who gets what. If it's agreed to sell, then it goes through a process. I've actually worked with county right-of-way agents to get a little assistance on how...
So, Mr. Rupe's request is kind of triggering the whole process?
Yes. And he will be able to buy all of it unless one or more of those two property owners wishes to and pays for their portion.
Okay. I'd like to open up to the applicant, Mr. Rupe.
Well, I'm here to represent him. He lives in Portland, Oregon.
Okay. Please state your name and address.
My name is Sandra Tocock, and I live at 309 Black Knob View. And we're the people that sold the parcel of land that he purchased off of ours. And then, there's that street right-of-way. I'd like to comment that as long, we haven't lived here that long, but as long as we've lived here, there has been no maintenance of that space at all. No weed cutting, it's full of trash, there's needles, there's all kinds of crap there. Mr. Rupe's plan is primarily, he doesn't want to look at that when he builds his home. So, he will, if he gets access to it, it will just become a part of his yard, and he will maintain it. He will cut it down, he will keep the trash picked up, et cetera. It's more a purpose of just having this 30-foot wide strip of weeds getting taller and taller and taller, and the ski trees, and giving more opportunity for people to go in there and whatever. And as I said, it's full of trash. We maintain, we have maintained that property up to that borderline, so I happen to know how tall it is. Because we keep our, we've been keeping that cut down and maintaining his for him right now, too. So, it's basically not necessarily a big financial gain, and it's a piece of property that you guys, nobody can build on it. It's not buildable. It's, you know, it's just sitting there. So, I'd like to, you know, obviously, he's a friend of ours, but I just wanted to give you a sense of what his intent is. I also would like to tell you that no one, he lives in Portland, and no one notified him of this hearing. We did.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought maybe I had the wrong mailing address, or I may misaddressed it.
We made the notification.
Okay, thank you.
And then, he did send a letter of authorization that Peter has given me permission to represent him.
Okay.
So, any questions?
Anybody have questions? I have one further question. Does he have building plans?
He's starting to work on it. He's starting to work on plans. His initial is that, it's a nice piece of property, and his initial is that he will build about a 1,200 square foot house, a lot of towards a higher level for he and his partner. And then, down below, you know, he just, he's got, he's somebody that is throwing up plans and plans and plans. And once he knows what he owns, really owns, then he plans to go to the planning commission and see what's possible. He does really, whatever property that he's rehabbed in his past, there's been a lot of counseling he has. Does beautiful work, very meticulous. And he only wants to be an addition to the city. They will not live here full-time, they'll probably be here nine months of the year. But it gives me and, gives my husband and I an opportunity to have a guest house.
No. Okay. We're three months out of the year.
Or whatever. Yeah. Yeah, kind of thing like that. So, but yeah, he's waiting to find out exactly how much property he has, and then he's going to present plans. He's been, I think he's been talking to you, Peter, about it.
He has, he has. Yeah.
Mr. Chair, what is the street address, or will be the street address?
We don't, we honestly don't know yet. We called because it's listed as 309 Black Knob, which is our address still. And we called, and the partition has gone through, but apparently, it's still sitting on someone's desk about assigning it an address.
I don't think it will get an address until there's a building permit, if it works like the county.
They have addresses a little easier, so...
And it'll be interesting, because we're Black Knob, but you can access this from Black Knob? You have to get to us from Van Dyke?
They're ascending, so I would suspect it's going to be like 311. Although, if it's on Van Dyke, it would probably be like 310?
Well, that depends. I mean, like I said, we sit up high off of Van Dyke, but our address is 309 Black Knob. But if anybody comes to that, they're down there on Black Knob, calling us, how do I get to you?
Yeah. It's going to depend on what street it's on. It probably would be 311 Black Knob or like 312 Van Dyke.
Yeah. So, just like that. But so far, it is, so his mail comes to us.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. I'll open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak on this particular item? I just had Sondre, you just spoke, and Patrick, still would like to say, speak to this?
No, not really. I don't need to add, it's just that John's primary interest is that...
If you could come up?
Yeah. I think our primary interest is that that piece of property be maintained, so that he would have, or someone would have control over it, so that it can be maintained. Would be less of a nuisance, a second.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay. Seeing nobody else wanting to speak on this item, I'll close the public hearing and open it for discussion. Commission? Patrick, anybody have a question? Okay. Chair, I intend a motion.
Okay. I move the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend the mayor and city council the transfer of 30 feet wide by 150-foot-long portion of city right-of-way to the applicant for appropriate consideration at $2 per square foot. Is that actually what the motion is now?
We should actually just take the money out, because that's, I don't think that the planning commission is...
But we're also, not just for the applicant.
Yeah. The motion is it should be to sell it for appropriate consideration. I got some correction from the attorney after I sent this out. So, we sell it, rather than selling to the applicant, because it's going to go through the public process, perhaps more appropriate would be a motion to sell right-of-way as mandated by state law for appropriate consideration.
Okay. I still move.
Okay.
I second.
Okay. Call for a vote. Mr. Dunn?
Aye.
Mr. Keith?
Aye.
Ms. Ryan?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, two unanimous. All right. Moving on to our last item of transfers this evening. Agenda Item Number Four. Another public hearing to consider an application for the transfer of city property. Consideration of a request for the transfer of a portion of city parcel, APN 103-60-26265A, located to the southwest of 348 Williams Avenue. The applicant wishes to acquire the portion of city parcel to correct a property line error with the home he owns at 348 Williams Avenue. And the applicant is Mr. James Terry. And again, all public notice requirements have been met. So, with that, I'll ask for a staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I'd like to note that from the original request, this did change a little bit, and we'll explain how. The initial request was to purchase the entire parcel in red. And it's driven by two factors. The first is, now, these lines don't always line up quite right, but you can see the house here sits substantially onto the city parcel. This is the house here. So, the applicant has a problem. Half their house sits on city-owned land. So, they'd like to correct that. Now, initially, he did want to purchase the entire parcel. I'm going to take the aerial off here, because you'll see there is this little parcel here that is owned by a third party. And she objected to selling the parcel to Mr. Terry without any auction. So, he ultimately chose to back up his proposal and limit it to just this portion here. Just the portion directly underneath his house that really is only connected. Now, this is an example of historically connected. His house sits on the parcel, historically connected to. The other individual who may have claimed to it, and again, keep in mind, these lines aren't quite right, is with us tonight, so we can also ask him, as well as the applicant, any questions he has about this transfer. But at this point, it would sheer off just this section and leave the rest of it for a later date.
Excuse me. Peter, can you give us a, can you zoom out a little bit and give us some context of where this is?
Ah, okay. This is up off of Moon Canyon. Well past Moon Canyon. So, this, I believe this was the fireside? So, we're looking way, way up here, up the canyon. I had quite a time finding it and quite a time not getting stuck and then turning around once I got there.
And that's that, Moon Canyon or Star?
Star. Where the big fire was.
Oh, Star.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Star Canyon. Yeah, this is Star coming up here. A lot of places that don't look like you can take a Chevy Impala. Turns out, you can, if you're brave. Or you're dumb and you're not sure what to do with it. So, again, this is the context. So, this is pretty steep hillside. Take a look at some pictures I took up there to kind of put it in some more context. Pictures of the home that is really in need of serious renovation. It's on the condemned list, and you can talk to Mr. Terry about his exact plans for this. But you can see how steep a lot of this terrain would be if he was purchasing. If he was purchasing, this is part of the parcel overall. However, because of that little 30 by 35, he'll leave that for a later date, and is right now just primarily looking to correct, again, this is what that hillside looks like, looking to correct the fact that the house sits across the property line. So, here, I'm standing really on city property, even though I'm standing right next to the house. And there's that other house down below. Again, same thing. This, the city property line is well to the left of this photo. I'm standing on city property while taking a photo of the wall of this house. Yeah, this is well, I had to go well past this sign to get where I'm going, so it was, again, quite an adventure. So, those pictures were all taken in this area. We're looking up the hill. And that house, that other house you saw in the photos down below was here. So, again, what we are looking at is just lopping off this section to correct this property line problem, because we can concede or conclude that this portion is historically connected with this property. Whereas the bulk of this, it was a much trickier argument to argue was historically associated with, and Mr. Terry... to argue was historically, um, associated with and Mr. Terry didn't, was not prepared to go through, through the risk of an auction at this time to get his house corrected.
Where is the access road to it?
Ah, so this access road.
It goes through the other property, just like.
Uh, it goes through... So it Y, it Y's off here and this is, this is through actual, this is city right of way, where it Y's off. This is actually on public property here, where it Y's. So the access road stays on public property here. Um, again, let me take the photos off, if you'll keep, just kind of bear in mind where that road is. So this area here, this is all public property. And so the road came here and wide off and came here. So the access is actually on existing, on existing public property, pretty much where it should be, which is a pleasant surprise. Uh, it does veer a couple of places onto private property here, but we'll have to deal with that at a later date. But right in this spot, it's in the right spot.
On my aerial, it's, one of those is called Williams?
That's the, that's the official address of this property. Star kind of then veers off onto Williams. I don't think I saw a sign for Williams, I just had to keep going up.
And then is, is, when I look at that red square you have there, is, is on the other end of it, is, is it on someone else's property or their building's now gonna be onto his property?
No, so the applicant owns, owns this.
The, the one that is not red?
Right, yeah.
And you're saying he's taking that square and it looks at the bottom of that, it's other people's buildings on?
This, this is, I believe is not permanent structures, this is stuff.
Okay.
But that, that gentleman is here in the audience, if you were to ask him, at least he was here, yes, he was here. Um, so we can ask questions of, of him as well.
Okay, thank you.
Peter, what's the access to that small square?
There, there is not one. And it is, it is reportedly a well site, but there is no well on it. Uh, the individual question is owned it for, her family's owned it for several decades and refers to it as the well site. I can't find any record of a well on it, there doesn't physically appear to be a well on it.
But that's the person that wanted the whole thing to go to auction because they, for whatever reason, they wanted to include their property in that auction? I was, that's all I was confused there.
Wanted the opportunity to buy the entire, buy this entire parcel at auction.
So expand theirs, okay.
Yeah, yeah. Because that 30 by 35 is not functional.
No.
Especially with no, with no access. It's really not even accessible physically based on what the topography looks like there. It's pretty much smack dab in the middle of the hill.
I assume that the tax code, they pay taxes?
It does, it, and that's, yeah, that's how I found the property owner and verified the dimensions and that, that the assessor doesn't think there's anything on it.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, do we have the applicant here, please? Okay. Hi Jim, please state your name and address, please.
Hello, uh, my name is James Terry and I live at 2125, uh, West Zepina Street in Knockville. And I had a little problem with that property and that's why I got involved in this property. Uh, the property that I bought along Wilson Road has a, uh, an easement for a road that'll never be built because it's being built in Douglas. But, uh, I do have an easement on my property now that I've purchased, uh, and that's why I bought this property up there because I don't know if someday they're gonna kick me off the property in Knockville. Anyway, uh, the property up there on, uh, Williams, which I was first told to the Star Avenue, uh, I got into a deal with a fellow and, uh, put the money into escrow only to find out, uh, that he wasn't quite truthful with me on the, uh, boundaries of the property and found out that, uh, three quarters of the house is on the city property. Uh, the back half of the house is on, about nine. In my petition, originally as Peter said, was to take that whole thing, but the lady down there said that she was, uh, concerned and I said, "Well, uh, you've owned the property for so many years, why haven't you done anything with it? I mean, you know, you've had the chance." And now that I've made a story, she comes up and it's almost like extortion. And I told her, I said, "Well, look, I'll change my plans and I won't take that and I'll just slice off that bit." That gives her an access because actually what I'm after, my lot, uh, the lot that you see, where it says 348, is lot number seven, eight and nine, starting from the top, seven, eight and nine. 10, 11 and 12 are the next three lots. I only want 10 and 11, that, uh, portion of 10 and 11, which leaves an access through 12 to get her up to her little 30 by 30. And if she wants to buy all the property behind it, then, you know, I, I feel that I've been a, I've, you know, I go, "Well, I wanna do my project, but if you have plans and I don't wanna block you." And that way she will have access. Now, the other, uh, situation here is my neighbor. And he does have storage, uh, that he has used down there, which is all right with me and, and, and I'm not willing, I'm not coming in here to change the world. What I'm interested in is above what he, his situation down here, where, where I'm concerned is above, uh, him. And so it really won't, uh, take any, uh, it won't be any, uh, inconsider, any inconsideration to him. The, uh, the situation with the property is that it doesn't have a sewer line. That whole entire canyon, it does not have a sewer line. And my proposal, but also, if you go up there, uh, that house was built in 1915. And I can't understand how a house built in 1915 isn't on its own lot? I mean, you know, and that was the original, uh, property here and the, and the heyday and how it ended up, uh, half on city property and half not, that, that, that goes beyond me. But the fact that if there isn't a sewer, my proposal is, is to put in an AGAQ certified, you know, sewer all the way up the canyon to my property, which will then act, uh, the city will then have access to other properties down the line, because there are properties that city owns that will then have an access to a sewer line, including the fire area, which is, uh, uh, let's face it, this is a, a problem, uh, this should be cleaned up. And also up there, I think for a hundred years, they put trash up in this property where I'm buying. And I will clear out all the trash. I will clear out, and I've got a bid for $10,000 to clear out the trash and get a fire clearing up there because it is a fire hazard. With that property as it is, it is a nuisance. I mean, I don't know if anybody has, uh, what do they call it when they move in and they don't pay their rent, uh?
Squatted.
Squatted up there. But I think it's a potential hazard for a squat and a fire. And my, you know, as far as I'm concerned, I'm willing to do the fire clearing, I will fire clear all of this area, all the way up here like this and up into here. I'll fire clear all that area. And I will also remove all the trash, I mean, there's literally sections of cars and stuff up there. And I have my contractor here who, who, who has given me a bid to remove all the trash and also to demolish the house, because the house is worthless. It's built in cowboy construction, it's not, uh, properly coded to any of the, I looked in there and all the, you know, it's, it is how it was built back in those days. My, my petition is to remove the house that's there and remove the foundation that's there and put up the exact size house, but move it onto the property because also, the road, the city road goes like this and it actually cuts into one foot of the, the house on this side. So I'll have to move the house over in order to, to get it onto the property. Or if the city wants to grace me that, uh, one foot, what, whatever, that, that is a situation where it is, it's impinging on the north side of the house of one foot and out of 850 square feet, 1,515 square feet to, to the south is on the city property. So most of the house is on the city property. And so that, that, that's my, uh, petition is to pay for the sewer. I will pay for the sewer line if you will give me that piece of property.
Sell you that property?
Sell me it, give it to me, transfer it, trade it, but the sewer itself is gonna cost $10,000 to $15,000 at least. Now, and that's $10,000 to $15,000, plus the clearing is another $10,000. So we're talking 25, okay, that I'm gonna put in. And it was always been my understanding that it was up to the city to put the sewer line right up to your property line and then you were responsible from your property line to your house. So this is a swap, per se, and, and that's what I'm, my, my petition is, is, is that. I think that I've tried to placate or, you know, make everybody happy. The lady that has her well site there and everything, she'll still have an access and it, it really doesn't disturb. The only problem would be my neighbor, Ernesto, and I don't know, uh, you know, like I said, I, I will work with this guy. I'm not, I might need some access into that land when I'm building my place up there, but I'm not in, coming here to change anything that he has of this place. He, he, he's been living there, uh, how many years, whatever, I'm not there to disrupt any of that. My, my situation is above him. And, and so there will be traffic and there will be dust and there will be parking, building and all that, and we'll, we'll work it out together. And also, you know, I have to access his land in order to get the sewer through because the, well, his land is here and the sewer's gonna come right straight up the canyon. I've already had, uh, Lynn, uh, the, uh, personer, the civil engineer out of Douglas, who is a, uh, specifically a sewer expert, went up there and he said, "It's all possible and it's all, it, it, it's all gonna be done," you know, uh, without much problem. So I, I do need to actually hire him as well to draw the plan. And so that's another, so I'm, I'm, I'm looking at spending quite a bit of money, uh, to get a sewer line up there, but I think the city will, uh, benefit off it because through, if you look down, if Peter stands down there, you'll see how much city land is down, down the canyon that isn't being, uh, accessed. There is, there is, as, as far as I can see, there was another, another whole swatch of, of property that, down here, that's city property and that, that there isn't a sewer, like there isn't a sewer where the fire area is. It ends right there, the sewer ends right there. So it would access, it would give possible sales to the city of all the land that's up there. Yeah, that's it. There's a, quite a big portion, uh, of city property that's still there. But anyway, that's, uh, that's a situation I'm in.
Okay.
You know, what, what I thought was gonna be a great thing turn, has turned out to be another nightmare, just like Knockville, because of property lines and, and things like that that were, uh, you know, so it's up to you guys.
Good. Thank you. Anybody have questions from, from Mr. Terry? Okay, thanks Jim. Uh, I'll open the public hearing for anyone who wishes to speak about this project, um, in this pocket. Anybody wishing to speak on it? Any comments you'd like to present? Okay. All right, seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and open it up for discussion with commissioners. Comments, questions?
Access to this square parcel, as she mentions in a letter here, that she feels like once this happens, she won't have access. I seem to recall, six, nine months ago, a year ago, there was a question of creating a parcel that no one would have access to if we sold some land off. Is this anything to think about here?
Well, so she was primarily concerned if the entire parcel was sold, it would completely land lock, land lock her. Under, under private property. And that's, that won't be the case with the current proposal. She will, she would have access through city property, would have the opportunity to buy city property. So we're not really creating a landlocked property, we're just changing ownership of some of the land around the landlocked property. It, it is already landlocked.
And that's, which parcel is that?
That's this little...
The little square?
This little square.
That's what she's referring to?
Yes.
That's not even a buildable site?
It's 30 by 35.
So what is the access for?
Supposedly it's a well site.
You have to climb up a cliff to get to it.
Yeah.
And so, okay.
And it's not a well site?
Yeah.
I mean, it's not even a buildable site for access anyways.
No, but there is no phys, there is no physical access to that, to that lot either.
It's covered in trash. That, for a piece of her property is all, and I will clean it, 'cause I don't wanna look at it.
I, I see that she's offering to sell that lot as well.
Well, she, 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 uh, she didn't name a price, but I felt a bit extorted, um, with her, the way she approached it. And, uh, you know, I'll, I, I mean, I know she pays about $250 a year in tax on it, 'cause I looked it up. And I, you know, if she wants a thousand dollars, I'll give her a thousand dollars for it, but I'm not gonna go into some kind of crazy, uh, you know, situation with it.
Okay.
Where she's gonna extort me and, and ask me to pay her $20,000 for it.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions from the commissioners?
I have a question. Point of clarification, I heard the word swap. This is a, uh, there will be a motion to sell this property, correct? There's no provision for a sewer line to be a part of this?
This, this, this committee just makes recommendations on whether or not to sell things, it's up to the city council.
That's understood.
But the council could swap value for value. But that's, that'll be presented at, at the council phase.
You're telling me that the council has the ability to consider the installation of a sewer line as part of the swap for this property?
As we understand it, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's what I needed to clarify.
Yeah. Okay.
What do they do up there now? Are you septic or do you?
My guess is, my guess is it's not a conventional septic, my guess is it's a, it's a cesspool. My guess is it's underground, an underground hole that everyone, yeah.
So if someone proposes building there, well, can they, can they use an alternate system like that or will they have to?
Not a, not a cesspool, but they would have to put in some sort of state approved waste disposal system, whether it's connection to a ci, a city sewer, a conventional septic system, some sort of alternative, but, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
There's no room for septic?
No.
That's, I was.
It's all rock. So I have guys up there and they said that it's impossible. So it has to be a sewer or the property is just gonna lay fallow.
Okay.
Okay, any further discussion, comments, questions? Chair, what are the team motion?
Again, the motion, I'm, is, is an or situation, either we're, sell it for $3 a square foot or installation of a sewer. I think the applicant is wanting to do a trade, like, is that?
And that, at this point, again, I, I just got, after this went out, I got guidance from the, from the attorneys that all of the motions at this level should be to sell, just.
Transfer.
To transfer and then, and then it would be up to the city council to decide how to dispose of. So transfer, they, none of the language about price or swap should be there, the motion simply to transfer city property.
And you've updated that when he makes his motion to just that smaller whole parcel?
Yes.
Somehow we, no, we keep looking?
Yes.
Yeah, 66 foot by 90 foot.
Yeah, it's, it's identified by size.
Okay, motion?
Ryan, can you make the motion on that?
I, I'm still not quite sure. Sheriff, could you make the motion? I'm still not quite sure, but my vision is not the best here in terms of what, what modification we need to make.
I move the planning and zoning commission recommend the mayor and city council the transfer of a 66 foot by 90 foot long portion of city parcel, APN 103-60-265A.
Period.
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 Okay, there we go.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, vote, uh, Mr. Dunn?
Aye.
Mr. Keith?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, it's unanimous. Okay. All right, thank you. All right, thank you for the, thank you for the applications. Now we go into our last agenda item, discussion in possible directions, staff regarding zoning regs and previously adopted ordinances. So taken away here...
So fortunately, the previously adopted ordinances...
Can we take the lights back on?
The previously adopted ordinances have been brought in. Actually, John, are you gonna stick around? John, are you gonna stick around for this? Were you gonna stick around? Because if not, I was gonna ask, I was gonna ask for my packet so I could make notes.
Oh, you're good.
Okay, thanks. I don't mind sticking around, I just wanna take, I just wanna take notes. So the previously adopted comments were all still, do you wanna, do you wanna go? I can take your information, and you don't have to stick around if you, if you don't want. And it'll be about two weeks before I give you a call. Because I'm gonna be on vacation. But we'd like to do, we'd like to do some swapping with you to get, to get that turnaround taken care of.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, it's Alice Mason. It's five two zero, two three four, five one nine nine.
Five one nine, okay, very good. And you're welcome to stay, I just, this is the part that people get really bored with. If you're not a big fan of zoning and planning and...
We love that stuff.
Oh, I'm sure.
I was getting through all that other stuff to get to this.
Right, thank you. So the city clerk's office did actually incorporate, there were something like twelve to fourteen ordinances that had never been, that were adopted, that had never been incorporated into the document. That has all been done. So now what we're looking at is some proposed changes that are... Some are driven by state law, some are driven by requests from this body. So I, your document is large because I reprinted the entire document with the, with the red lines in it, simply so we could have kind of an easier time going, going through them. So the first big update is page eighteen, where we add accessory living quarters. Yes. So those were, those were mentioned in the existing zoning regs as permitted in any residential property, but they were never mentioned again. They were never defined, they were never explained how you got one. They were simply permitted. So what we've done is we've copied the county standards, which have repeatedly loosened, so they might not be as loose as, they might be looser than this body would like to see for the city. Short version, accessory living quarters, some places call them accessory dwelling unit. It's a second home, whether it's a guest house, whether it's mother-in-law quarters, caretaker's quarters. And county doesn't keep a size restriction, so there's currently not one in here, but you, we may wanna talk about one. It's simply, one of the houses needs to be smaller than the other, is pretty straightforward.
Subordinate in size.
Subordinate in size, which is pretty loosely, smaller than the other is pretty much it. And the way that we're suggesting handling this is, because you still have to meet all other applicable site development standards, setbacks, anything of that nature, so not all lots would have room for it. But we suggest handling it as a neighbor veto process. And just doing, going out three hundred feet in all directions. Neighbors get fifteen days to respond in writing. If they, if they oppose the request in writing, then it's automatically denied. A denial may result in appeal to this, to this body. This body can override an appeal. But it's a way to get, for folks that do need that second dwelling, I don't know how often this comes up, but it may come up because there aren't any rules on it. One thing I will make this body aware of, and it's not, housing pressure is not huge in Bisbee, although affordable housing pressure can be. Some jurisdictions are starting to make accessory dwelling units an as-of-right use, even making them full-time rentals, long-term rentals, to relieve housing pressure. Some cities have done this, the entire state of Oregon just did this, so that anybody can build an accessory dwelling unit as long as they meet setbacks. We're not recommending going that far.
So, quick question, Peter, you said what could result in a denial?
Any opposition, any written opposition from a neighbor within three hundred feet. It's not discretionary for staff. Anyone within three hundred feet says, no, I don't want it, I don't want it because I, because they ran over, because I think they are killing the bunnies, results in a denial. And this is a case I actually had.
So, wait, but the way it's written here is that it goes to the special use process?
It may go to the special use process. The applicant can simply take the denial and walk away from it.
Wait a minute, this is, this is really a little ambiguous here.
Okay.
So if you get a written protest for whatever...
It says shall be presented, and it should say may be presented.
Why not shall? Why not automatically go to special use?
And the applicant can choose to withdraw if they choose, which usually that's what happens if it's a good reason. And I use the run, they're killing the bunnies, as an actual reason I had to deny an accessory living quarters and take it to the planning commission. Which, of course, the planning commission said that has nothing to do with whether or not they can have a mother-in-law quarters approved. I have no problem with it being automatically shall go to the planning commission, and this body can make a decision.
Unless the applicant chooses to just withdraw.
Unless the applicant chooses to withdraw, yeah.
No, I think it should go to the special use process. Not denying it outright because of some, we have some wacky neighbor who, like you just said, comes up with some, you know, random excuse for not wanting it. That's not, that's not a legitimate reason to just outright deny it.
Right, and that's, but, and the way it's, and it's written this way so that staff doesn't have discretionary power to decide what is inappropriate, but this body does, because that's really a more appropriate. I mean, some of them...
And, and also invites other members of the public to come in and weigh in on it.
Right. And often in support, which happened with the bunny, with the bunny neighbor.
And this is for rebuilt?
Or for converting an existing, an existing structure into a dwelling unit. If it's already there, it would be grandfathered in.
Yeah, because I think hundreds of them.
Oh, yeah, they're all over the place. But this is, a lot of it will come, would take place in areas not old Bisbee, although Warren has quite a few of them as well. But if someone in Warren, or I live over in San Jose, I could request permission to put one of these units in my backyard. I'm on sewer, and I could squeeze one in the backyard. I could squeeze a five or six hundred square foot house in my backyard.
Well, we're getting lots of questions about tiny houses and how tiny houses for them.
Bingo. So that way, maybe somebody doesn't wanna own a full piece of land for a tiny home, I can rent them space in my backyard. There we go.
But it has to be a permanent structure, not something they wheel in there. Because otherwise it's considered an RV.
Tiny homes, tiny homes are a huge gray area that we probably need to have a much longer discussion on, although we can discuss them right now, because I don't remember if they're mentioned in here or not.
They are.
The problem is, tiny home means a different thing to a different person. Probably, all six of us in this room are picturing something different when we say tiny home.
No, we, Joe Ward presented us with the standards for what's considered tiny home.
There isn't one, standards from where?
We have them, I, we've got them, do you remember Doug?
There's, there's no legally adopted standard, is the, is the thing.
There's a building code.
There's a building code standard.
That's what he, I think he pulled it out of building code.
Building code says like two ninety-four, most modern version says two forty-four. That doesn't, that's a permanent structure. But what do we do, that's very obvious, when you've got a two hundred and forty foot, two hundred, three hundred square foot permanent structure. Ones on wheels that aren't registered with MVD, that are portable but not registered with MVD, or they're made out of a Mr. Shed that is fairly readily movable. That's where we're getting into gray areas.
Then they're not considered a permanent home, and they're not considered an RV, if they're not registered with MVD. The ones that get transported, we learned that the ones that get transported around on chassis have to meet the same, have to meet standards pertinent to the same as an RV. And then they can be made a permanent structure once, if they're put on a permanent foundation.
And I've got no problem with that, I just know we get a lot of questions, and what most people wanna do, a lot of people wanna do, not most, doesn't fall into any of those categories. They want something that they can wheel around, but they don't wanna make it an RV with MVD and register it with MVD. And that's where things get weird.
I think that's the way that...
That's the way it should be.
Which should be considered.
Yes.
That you're not gonna, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be advocating for somebody to wheel, wheel in one of these tiny homes with the option of just wheeling it back out or something.
Right, I'd want it wheeled down onto a permanent foundation as well. Ultimately, this is something that, I'm surprised the State Planning Association has not pushed the state legislature to do more work on in defining for us, because there's things that work at the state level that we can interact with, that would solve a lot of problems, like is it a vehicle, is it not a vehicle? I'm getting kind of off track there. A caveat on open-ended accessory living quarters that I do wanna make folks aware of, and this is, plays into something we talked about here later, which is short-term rentals, which I'm sure you folks are already familiar with, the issues of not being able to regulate short-term rentals in single-family homes, except in very limited degrees. Every one of these is a single-family home, and therefore starts becoming a potential short-term rental. We don't advertise that fact in the county, but it's, it's the legal interpretation we have, is once you put that, that accessory dwelling unit in, it can be rented short-term with no, with minimal oversight, and no special permit required from, from the city.
Even though you now have two homes on the same lot?
If you're allowed to have two homes on the lot, you're allowed to rent them short-term. So that's what this gets you into, you can nip it in the bud. If I'm afraid my neighborhood is gonna turn into a bunch of short-term rentals, I'm just gonna fight all the, all the ALQs in the first place. But once it's there, it's a single-family home, and the rules on short-term rentals in a single-family home kick in. Because those are, those are in here as well. And there's a suggestion I have, even if it's not already in here, there's a suggestion I have that the city take on those that will do a small amount to help the situation.
Sounds like, it sounds like, how can you stop, aren't you saying the state's already told us we can't control what we do as far as, if someone wants to rent their property or not?
We can only, we can't require any permit differently than any other single-family home, with a few small exceptions. One of which is, and this is what Tucson does, require a free informational permit with a contact number. So if there's a problem, they can, they can look through their files and see who to call on the phone. That at least, plus that gets them registered in a way to make sure you're collecting bed tax from them. Because the law also specifically says you can collect bed tax from them, but if you can't register where they are, it's really hard to collect bed, ensure they're paying bed tax.
But you've got, in your standard long-term rental, public ALQs may be submitted as a special use. So you're saying if an ALQ gets approved, then they'll have to go through the special use process anyway if they wanna make it a long-term rental?
A long-term rental, that's what, that's what the county does, and right now, oddly, that stands up to law. That might not be what the city wants to do. The city may want to say, you can build, get permission from your neighbors to build a backyard dwelling. Again, I'm gonna use myself, I get permission from my neighbors, nobody cares in three hundred feet. I build a five hundred square foot house in my backyard, and I turn it into a rental. Maybe the city doesn't have a problem with that.
Who cares who's in it? Whether it's the mother-in-law, or somebody...
That's, that's the question for this body. Do, do you think the city cares?
I guess, I'm feeling like we're so overrun with these short-term rentals right now, I'm personally not a fan of them. So encouraging people to start adding more units to their parcels, I mean, it may not be stoppable, but...
But that's where the first level of the application goes. So that if somebody's proposing one, say, next door to you, you could take it up and say, protest it, and say, no, I'm not a fan of short-term rentals, I'm not a fan of long-term rentals. You know, unless there's some condition or deed restriction that says only my mother-in-law's gonna live in this, their mother-in-law's gonna live in that structure. You can protest it and have it go to that public hearing process, through the special use process.
I do think the city cares, though. I mean, you could get activity in a short-term rental that is inappropriate.
And that's, the, so at this point, we can't regulate the short-term rental. There's a few things we can regarding public safety. It cannot be used for pornography, or selling drugs, or other illegal behavior. The law already says, the law says you can't, you can regulate a short-term rental for illegal behavior, which makes no sense because it's already legal. But there's nothing that says we can't regulate long-term rentals, permanent rentals, where it becomes your address. It's...
So I think that's ambiguous, if we're saying short-term rentals, if it gets established, then they can go ahead and do short-term rentals, because there's nothing we can do. Why create a whole other new special use process for long-term rental? Which is a much more stable residential situation.
Personally, personally, I agree with that. Professionally, I'm a little more fuzz. Professionally, I mostly agree with that too. I don't really see, long-term is general, long-term rental is usually less impact than short-term rental.
Yeah. So why make them go through a special use process for that? If they're, if they're gonna get a pass on short-term rentals?
Because you do, you are just potentially looking at the fact that you're doubling, potentially doubling the density in neighborhoods.
Yeah, but you're doing that with short-term rentals, you're doing that with mother-in-laws, whoever's in there. And that's what I'm saying, the very first application step is to notify the neighbors. And if the neighbors have a concern that A, it's gonna be a short-term rental, or B, it's gonna be a long-term rental, or C, it's going to, you know, the mother-in-law's gonna be hard to live next door to, or whatever. I mean, it's a matter of who's in there. If there's gonna be an impact by doubling that density, then that would become apparent at that very first step of the application. And, and be able to go through a legitimate special use public hearing process, and have all the neighbors within three hundred feet weigh in on that proposal. And stop it dead in its tracks if it seems like the neighborhood is against doubling the density on this particular property for whatever reasons.
But the problem is, in a short-term rental, it turns over. So you may have your friends that knew this for two weeks. And then the following two weeks could be mother-in-law. And then following that could be somebody totally different.
Absolutely. But what I'm saying is, as soon as it's proposed, the neighbors should be thinking about that.
Yeah, if we can't regulate short-term rental, why are we regulating long-term rental, I think is the issue. Instead, regulating whether or not a second unit goes in.
Whether or not an ALQ should be there in the first place.
Right. And I don't think you can tell somebody, you can rent this person, but you can't rent that person.
Of course not. But, but the neighbors and the city have the opportunity to say, you know, I don't know if the city weighs in on the, on the letter, the city can't weigh in on the letters going around. But it's giving the residents of an area the opportunity to weigh in on a proposal. So if somebody's proposing to put one of these things in their backyard, and you're not sure what they're gonna do, or it's really ambiguous as to what they're planning to do there, short-term rental, mother-in-law, one week, long-term rental next year, you have the opportunity as a neighbor to say, I protest.
And, and right now...
Then it goes to the special use process.
And we can look at things like parking, you can look at parking. Is there enough parking for it? Just, just as, for edification, although Mark might be the only one who's really edified by this. Several cities, Minneapolis, City of Arcadia, California, the entire state of Oregon have now passed laws that any single-family lot is essentially now up to a triplex lot. And we're, and a lot of them are saying you can't ban, you can't prohibit them based on, you still have to meet regular site development standards, like with Oregon, but you can't create, I'm trying to find a non-vulgar phrase for it, really kind of sleazy zoning regulations. You can't create a huge setback from the back fence to the house to basically zone them out of existence. You can't create extra parking requirements for them, just to try to relieve housing pressure. This is not an area where that's appropriate. But letting people put them in, and all five of us live in different neighborhoods, and all five of us would have very different responses, I think, to somebody wanting to put this, put a five hundred square foot guest house in their backyard. Based on what our neighborhood is like. I think our five neighborhoods would respond differently.
Right, and I'm saying, you know, the way this is proposed, with the exception of this line, standard long-term rental, accessory living quarters, that should, in my opinion, should get scratched out. Because I think the first line of defense for neighbors to be protected and be able to speak up against doubling the density, or having parking problems, et cetera, comes right at the very beginning of this process.
I think that's, isn't that, well, that's where you, I guess you spun me around a little. Because when we started, you know, there was a concern that if we all got the letters, and I'm the kooky guy in the neighborhood, so I just, I just say no to everything. And that essentially kills it unless the applicant says, no, 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 I wanna go in front of a committee. You expressed, or someone here expressed, well, we don't wanna allow that. We want every one of these to go automatically to the committee.
Right.
But it seems to me like what you're proposing would be true, is like, if I get one of those letters and I go, yeah, I don't like this, so I write the letter and say, yeah, I'm against this because they're killing bunnies. And then it essentially kills the entire process unless the applicant says, no, I wanna take it up another level.
No, that's not the way it's written. And the applicant doesn't get the choice of taking it up to another level.
I thought they could, once it was denied.
No, it automatically does go unless they choose to withdraw it, is the way it's written right now.
Okay, so then it automatically kicks into a full...
Yeah, it kicks into a special use. If, if my next-door neighbor writes, applies for one of these, and I say, no, I don't, I don't like, I live actually next door to Dan Maldonado, let's just pretend I don't like Dan, and I say, no, Dan, you can't have one, because I don't like that you feed people in Gore Park, it automatically is gonna come here as a special use, and you guys are gonna say, why is that, what does that have to do with a unit in the backyard? And you're a jerk for not supporting feeding people in Gore Park, you know?
So right now, it's set up for the initial... So right now it's set up so the initial line of defense is the neighbor just says, I don't like it. And so that triggers it kind of here.
Yes.
So if nobody sends a letter in, does it still come here?
No, it just goes.
It just goes, okay.
So, but when you were saying an automatic denial, I don't see that written in here at all.
No, instead what, the way it's worded now is it automatically comes to a special use.
Yeah, okay.
We treat it as an automatic denial, but it really means it's an automatic appeal to the planning permission.
Okay. But I'd like to get rid of that automatic denial and appeal language if it's in here. I don't think it is in here.
No, I think it just says.
It automatically goes to a special use process, period.
And now I'm, so I'm looking for the language about the long-term rental. I know it's in here.
Limitations, under limitations, the very first sentence.
There we go. Ah, there we go. That's why I couldn't find it.
I would scratch that.
So we want us, but, but stick with one per and the same restrictions, no RVs other than, other than park models, but park models, mobile and manufactured homes only permitted in a zoning district where they are already allowed.
Correct.
Which is what the city, which is what the county does. If you're only allowed site-built homes, you cannot put a park model or manufactured home ALQ. It's got to be another site-built.
Just a random example, because I know he had a couple there for a while. But I remember Doug Stanhope used to have a couple of trailers on one of his lots or attached to his property. Were those all there legally or were those just there and no one?
Those were probably just there and nobody complained.
No one bugged him. It was well done.
And there are rules, there are rules about how long somebody can stay in their RV and, you know, as a guest.
Right, you have your friends in town, they can park next to your house.
Right, for a certain number of weeks or something like that. There are some rules about that in here already.
This, this may have changed because it's a few years ago I was involved in it. But in Tucson, we used to have a more expansive R1, R2, R3, R4. This happened around the university, like R1 lots would have a, really an illegal rental on. They would have a guest house in the back. And you generally would get around it by not having a oven. You could have a hot plate and a refrigerator.
It's not technically.
But technically though, it was, it was never a legal rental, even though people did it.
Right.
So, but has that just changed in the state level and stuff?
No, the state, the only thing the state has done is deregulated the short-term rentals, the single-family homes.
Okay.
No. And that's often, because often a dwelling unit is defined as having a kitchen facilities. The county gets around that by saying a detached bedroom is also an accessory living. So you can't just say, well, I only have a hot plate in there, so it doesn't count.
We used to have a big argument about whether they could have a separate meter or not.
Right, yeah. No, we used to go more on lending because lenders wouldn't like to see a duplex versus a single.
Right, right.
So other than that first sentence, under limitations, I think it's, this one looks good. This one's going to have to come back for us though, in a public hearing.
Yes, yeah. This is, this is just work session to get, to get ideas. And then it'll come back as a fully advertised public hearing where I would be shocked if the public doesn't weigh in on some of these items. I'll be disappointed if the public doesn't weigh in on some of these items right there.
Well, certainly, you know, controversy over the Yell trailer was all about this. It's led us to our alternative lodging.
Which amuses me because as I understand, those cottages are park models. And under the law, park models are also RVs. Those are legally exactly the same thing, but it was all appearances.
Yeah. I have another, there's a rehabilitated park models. I know the guy who did it, Jack Dyson. He had a really nice job on the little cottages, the bungalows.
Well, interesting, historically, many homes, at least in my neighborhood, had accessory buildings, which they rented out to single minors.
Yeah, absolutely.
Historically, I mean, I don't know that very many of those are still being maintained as such, but there certainly are living quarters attached to the back of lots throughout Warren.
Yeah. We're going to see it more and more because I mean, I don't know if you pay attention, but Amazon's now selling a house that you can have delivered.
Yeah.
So there is going to be a movement throughout to, the little house that's coming.
I've lived in a 400 square foot house.
Well, it's the old Sears and Roebuck thing, it's just Amazon's.
Well, the reason I bring up Arcadia, California along that point is, one, it's the first place I remember living as a child. But it was post, a huge swath of post-World War II bungalows with detached garages in the back. There were so many of them illegally converted into dwelling units. Arcadia finally decided to solve the problem and their housing pressure by just issuing blanket approval for accessory dwelling units. And then there was a grace period to basically get them hooked up correctly, that they would waive all penalties and fines to just get them hooked up correctly to sewer and water and meter it correctly. And then everybody was happy. And it's just, anywhere there's big housing pressure and no room to expand, it's becoming a thing.
Well, it fulfills a lot of county and our city, other cities' plans in terms of infill as opposed to scraping new land outside of the city for subdivisions. This allows, you know, from a planning standpoint, this, this is a good mechanism for infill.
Yeah, I could build a six or 700 square foot house.
If you don't mind having an extra meter in your backyard.
We're going to have lively meetings for some time.
Oh yeah.
If we move into this.
Well, so moving on, page 48 just adds a definition.
Protest.
Just adds a definition of accessory living quarters.
Actually, I, you know, I think this ALQ thing is really, you know, that first app, if you get a protest, it goes to a special use. It's a really good mechanism because it may be appropriate in some neighborhoods. Nobody has a problem with it, whether they're short-term rentals or not. But in other areas, people are saying, I'm sick of all these short-term rentals and that's all this person's going to do here. And so I'm protesting it. And then it opens it up for more public discussion about it and deny it, possible denial.
Well, certainly, it's the only control we have now over, over the expansion of these Airbnb's, really.
And there's, there's one other small mechanism that's not exactly control, but at least makes you aware of them. And we'll get to that as we're going through on page 55. Because 48 is just an addition of, a definition of accessory, pardon me, of accessory living quarters. And it's just cribbed right from the counties. It's really just saying, because if you have it, you can do an attached structure as well. Maybe you turn a garage, you know, you turn the existing garage into, like I enclosed my carport and turned it into a really, really little house. You know, that would be the same sort of thing, little studio apartment in my, in my carport. That would be an accessory living quarters as well. So you can't get around, well, it's still attached to the house, so it doesn't count. If it's got a kitchen, it's an accessory.
The bathroom doesn't count?
Not ju, just having a bathroom does not count. Because people have bathrooms in detached garages and shops. Now, we're fully aware, a lot of times people put the bathroom in and once you've got a bathroom.
There's a hot plate.
There's a place, or you put in a kitchen without, you know, you got a garage. You may already have 220 power for an electric stove. It's really easy to convert, once there's a bathroom in there. But bathrooms in garages are common enough that that won't, that won't trigger it.
So then if I understand this right, so if I put a guest house on my property, but I can't have a kitchen in it, I can only have one kitchen?
No, per accessory.
Or roof.
A dwell, yeah, dwelling unit is, yeah. So you can't, so you can't make, put an accessory living that's, that's a duplex is really what that means. That, that's a really fancy way of saying you can't build an extra duplex in your backyard because it can only have one kitchen per unit.
Okay, Tony's the one?
Yep.
Well, no, I just said some interesting, but, but could I put, if I have the dirt available, could I put two freestanding dwellings at them so that I have three on my parcel?
No, that's, that's in the, that's in the limitations of accessory living quarters. So you can double density potentially, but not triple it.
Okay, unless we get some new laws to pass to the state.
So 55 is taking exactly out of state law, definition of vacation rental or short-term rental, just to codify it so everybody knows what it is and why we are limited in our regulatory authority. But I do have a comment there on permits, informational permits for emergency contacts. That is something we are allowed to do under state law. And in fact, it might not have to be informational. We might be able to charge a processing fee for it. But that's the one type of permit we can request that's different than a, in other single-family dwelling, is one to get us emergency contacts.
Yes.
I like, I like it.
I think it's a good idea.
Anybody else? Yes, good idea.
And also I'll dig into what other cities, particularly what Tucson is doing. Here, I, Bisbee, I can get away with saying Tucson is doing it this way and not be tarred and feathered. At the county, I can't do that. But I think Tucson is likely to have a good solution as to how they're handling it.
But if they're licensed, they are ready to have them.
Licensed by whom?
The city.
Business license.
If they've chosen to get one.
There's a lot of.
They don't have.
No. This way we know and we have a contact number. So if people are partying really hard or there's a water leak, who does the city contact if nobody's there?
And this would be a good mechanism too, to make sure that, you know, they are getting, that they do have a business license.
Yes.
They are paying your bed taxes. And we can wait for us to get, the city to get its due.
The law that now says we can, we're limited in what we can regulate, started out as a law guaranteeing we could collect bed tax. And then it morphed into, but you can't regulate them, so how do you know they're there except for these informational permits? So other than that, that's the only actual direct changes in that document because a lot of the other stuff I was going to work on, turns out we've already, we're already covered.
Right.
Food trucks, there's been changes in state law deregulating them. I'm not seeing any issues with our food truck regulation, but I can add to it. There's a state legislature who has a bunch of food trucks and was getting, told he couldn't do a lot of things in cities. And so there's a bunch of new deregulation passed. Home occupations, those have been deregulated, not as much at the city level, at the county level. We're still good on those. The other one is wireless, small wireless facilities in city right-of-way. We're going to have to add those. We don't get, we don't get a say in that. If somebody wants to attach a 5G cellphone antenna to a city light pole, they get to do that. We can establish fees for that. But we also have a very short shot clock on processing the permit. But we can't make them camouflage it. They have to be able to do it for a minimal leasing fee. And that's, the wireless industry scored a huge, huge win on, on that one. It took away a lot of jurisdictional authority on. There's definitions for what is a small cell site. You can't put up a whole new cell tower. And if they want to put up a new tower, that's still regulatable, but just new equipment is pretty much off limits. They want, they want, they want to start slapping antennas on the side of the Copper Queen? There's really not much we can do about it.
Well, the Copper Queen would have to be involved.
Yeah, the Copper Queen wants to do it. Yeah, let me be clear, private property.
But you'd also then have your historical planning and zoning override on it.
Your design review board.
Why wouldn't you?
Because the state law says so. We can't make them camouflage it.
Does anyone, does any, I just, I'm going to.
No, I, I don't.
Does anybody ever test these laws?
Some of them, some of them, yes. Well.
Because that's obviously blatant, it sounds like a lobby one out.
Oh, it's exactly what happened. Well, we've already learned what happens when we test these laws. And that's, they take away our state shared funding.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, they tried and no one ever tested. I mean, like the bag thing, no one really took it to court. We just said, okay, we're going to throw, roll over on the bags.
Well, we can't afford.
We, yeah, we can't afford to take it to court and we can't afford to, we can't afford to lose our state shared funding. And the law is unfortunately really clear.
Okay, well, thank you, Peter.
So I will, I will add, and the other, the other ones, the wireless, I'm just going to bring forward at the public hearing and we can change it on the fly if we have to.
Okay.
We have at least two more transfers of city property that would be on the docket coming up. I've got two more sitting in my inbox that I just was not going to cram onto this meeting. It was going to be long enough as it was. There's probably going to be a lot more of them as we start to push to get rid of property we don't need and correct, like with the young lady on Adams Avenue, that we want to buy some of, well, really we want to swap her property, give her stuff we don't need that she wants in exchange for something she doesn't need and we want.
Okay, that's it. I'd like to call for Commissioner reporting comments. Anybody have any, anything, any, this, we're supposed to refrain from any discussion, comments only.
Yes, at our last meeting, we did raise up two issues that we want to move forward on. And that is code enforcement and park. We do now have a community activist on the city council. I would like to move forward. Certainly at the last meeting, I made comment that Joe Ward had provided me a full list of code enforcement violations in terms of identifying those properties, that I would like to have shared with the rest of the commission. And we do have an agreement with the city council, or city has an agreement with the, with the county in terms of having code enforcement support.
That was being discussed between the city manager and the Development Services Department about code enforcement. I'm not sure what the outcome is being actively discussed.
Well, if, if the current agreement is that they're providing us with that support.
Yes, I'm aware of that.
And if that's going to be modified, but anyway, that's something we've never really pursued. And it's interesting, the keys that come before us is an example of hopefully if dealing with the, with the property. And then of course, parking continues to be an issue and I would like to see us move forward in providing additional parking alternatives.
Yeah, we're not supposed to have any discussion about this, so I'll refrain.
But anyway, those are two agenda items in terms of.
Well, it's, it's, that's not other, okay. That's Commissioner report comments, but that's not future agenda items. But you're suggesting that future agenda items.
Right.
Code enforcement and parking.
Correct.
In fact, parking is a future agenda item for a decade now.
Can we clarify parking and I can put, I can at least put a work session on the next agenda? Parking alternatives, parking ordinances. We all know parking stinks in Old Bisbee. So I guess parking suggestions from the commission, or I'm sorry, from staff.